Good evening. We'll call the May 5th Board of Education meeting to order. And the first thing we can do is get some lights on up here.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry we don't have the seats. My goodness, you think we're having a birthday or something? Or food, but we don't have any food, I'm sorry. And as soon as we get an ability, I guess, y'all just have to stand up for a little bit. We do have a lot of people to recognize tonight, so I'm glad to see everybody is able to make it. All right, if we all rise for the invocation by Mr. Thorson.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we have all gathered here tonight in your name to bless these students in this school district. We have many parents, students, and faculty who are here tonight to hear the decisions that this board has to make. Please bless us and give us the strength to make the decisions that's going to help your children, our students, and our schools today. In his name we pray, amen.
You remain standing for the colors.
Mark Tom Hope, Coggar Hope, Order Arm, Left Pates, Carrie Coats, Freeze Coats.
Ladies and gentlemen, join me in the blaze. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. And we want to thank North Brunswick High School for R of T.C. Well, this evening, we have a lot of board salutes, and so we will begin the show.
We're glad that all of you are here tonight. This is a special night. We're going to salute a large number of students who have performed academically, artistically, in a method that is, makes you as parents proud and makes us as school personnel, teachers, faculty, and our board really proud of you too. And we want to take that time to salute you individually and as a group. The Beta Club state winner is Hannah Eisenhower. The Shalote Middle School Junior Beta Club attended the North Carolina Junior Beta Club Convention in Greensboro on February the 8th through the 10th. The students entered multiple academic and artistic categories. Hannah Eisenhower, an eighth grader at Shalote Middle, was the winner of the color photography division. Hannah used the sinking boat at Holden Beach as her subject. As winners of this competition, as a winner of this competition, she will advance to the Nationals in Nashville, Tennessee. Where are Hannah's mom, dad, parents? If you would stand, please. The Shalote Middle Science Olympiad Team, Madison Ward and Powell Palmer, if you will come forward, please. Congratulations to the Shalote Middle School Science Olympiad Teams who participated in the Wilmington Regional Competition in March. Shalote Middle students medaled in forty events and qualified for the state tournament in Raleigh on April the 24th and 25th. Of those who attended the tournament in Raleigh, Madison Ward and Powell Palmer won sixth place overall out of one hundred and fourteen schools at the North Carolina State Science Competition in the area of Disease Detective Event. Congratulations, ladies.[323.27][323.27](Applause) And if the parents would raise their hand and wave at us so we'll... The 2015-2016 North Carolina Farm-to-School Poster Contest Board Salutes for May 5th, 2015, Nick Herth. Nick, congratulations. The North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Science Division of Marketing recently announced that from over thirty-two hundred student entries, thirteen students' artworks were selected to be featured in the 2015-2016 North Carolina Farm-to-School Calendar. We are proud to announce that one of those thirteen state winners comes from Brunswick County Schools. Special congratulations go to Nick Herth from Jesse May Monroe Elementary School for being selected as that winner. His artwork will be featured in the state calendar. In addition, he will attend an awards program at Dorton Arena in Raleigh on May 15th. Our school system will also be given a set of, a set number of calendars, as well as additional ones that can be downloaded on the North Carolina Farm-to-School website. We are also want to recognize the visual arts teacher, Teresa Ryder, for encouraging Nick to enter this contest. And Nick's parents, if you'll, raise your hand so we know.[421.03][421.03](Applause) Thank you, buddy. This is a long... This one consists of thirteen different students. And what I will do is read each of the students' names and the school that they attend and the area that they won their particular award in. And we'll have all thirteen up here, and then we'll salute those and laugh and clap and have a really good time. This is the General Federation of Women's Clubs of North Carolina. The board salutes for May 5th today. This year, the General Federation of Women's Clubs of North Carolina sponsored fine arts contests through their local organizations throughout Brunswick County and other counties in the state. Brunswick County students won many local district awards and represented those chapters at the state level. Special congratulations go to the following students from Supply Elementary, Cedar Grove Middle School, Shalote Middle School, South Brunswick Middle School, and South Brunswick High School. Each of these for winning at the state level, at the State Arts Festival, at Campbell University, for their various types of visual art and creative writing products. First student is Lauren Schulte-Hock from Supply Elementary School, who won first place for her short story entitled Anna's Wolf Adventure.[514.91][514.91](Applause) Savannah Clemmons of Cedar Grove Middle School won second place for her poetry entitled Madison McFadden of Cedar Grove Middle School won third place for her short story entitled Whitney Smith of Shalote Middle School won second place in graphics with her God Loves Our next student is Elle Huggins of South Brunswick Middle School, who won first place in Mosaic Middle School Glass Art.[566.54][566.54](Applause) Katie Kern of South Brunswick Middle School won third place in middle school decorative art painting with her Styrofoam Cut Design. Destiny Pennington of South Brunswick Middle School won third place in middle school metalcraft with her tree. Stella Bradall from South Brunswick Middle School won first place in middle school photography with her sunset photo.[614.72][614.72](Applause) Caitlin Hatch of South Brunswick High School won first place in ceramics with her Mexican-inspired necklace entitled Mayan Jade.[629.79][629.79](Applause) Hannah Brown of South Brunswick High School won third place in ceramics with Pentagonal Katrina Marchetti of South Brunswick High School won third place in die crafts with Lexi Bafano of South Brunswick High School won third place in creative stitchery with Erin White of South Brunswick High School won second place in graphic drawing titled And if we could get all of the parents to please stand so that we can recognize you I told you it's going to be a terrific night. The 2015 North Carolina All-State Middle School Honors Band Salutes. This year, twenty-five of our middle and high school band students from South Brunswick Middle School, West Brunswick High School, and South Brunswick High School were recognized for superior musicianship and named to the 2015 North Carolina All District Honors Band. Of those, two band students from South Brunswick Middle School's band program, led by band director Ben Edwards, made the 2015 North Carolina All-State Middle School Honors Band. This outstanding band comprised of the best musicians from across the state, performed on May the 1st and May the 3rd at UNC Greensboro. Congratulations to these two talented band students for making the 2015 North Carolina All-State Middle School Honors Band. Matthew Ordinez and Braden Williams, if you'll please come forward.[778.56][778.56](Applause) And if I could get the parents also to stand. And Ben is sitting, where are you, Ben Edwards? Right there with the towel. That's the only time in the world you'll see him with a towel. The next award is titled "The Board Salute for Dream Up Career Exploration Program Contest." A Brunswick County Leland Middle School AIG student, Sarah Tyzinger, has been selected as one of only five national winners of the USA Today Office Depot Dream Up Career Exploration Program Challenge National Competition. That was a long one.[843.01][843.01](Laughter) (Applause) Hey, wait a minute, I'm not through. Tyzinger. The five national winners from a poll of more than two hundred students will take their first steps towards their future through hands-on mentoring experiences with professionals in their chosen fields. Sarah's dream job is to be a veterinary technician. The Dream Up program is offered to middle school teachers at no cost by the Office Depot Foundation, an independent nonprofit foundation that serves as the primary charitable giving arm of Office Depot Incorporated. It's in collaboration also with the USA Today Charitable Foundation. During the school year, approximately thirty thousand students and two hundred eighty educators in thirty states participated in the Dream Up program. This Dream Up program was implemented as part of an early college elective this past fall, thanks to a grant from Brunswick Electric and a gift of newspapers for Leland Middle School classrooms from USA Today. Each year, we salute the annual Governor's School State finalist, and that's what we will be saluting next. This year's Brunswick County Schools, this year Brunswick County Schools are proud to announce that four of its students will be among those across the states that are selected to attend the prestigious North Carolina Governor's School. This summer program will last five weeks at one of two campuses. The west campus is located at Salem College in Winston-Salem, and the east campus is at Meredith College in Raleigh. Brunswick County Schools helps fund this program each year as a symbol of its support for the program and especially its outstanding students who were selected to attend. The competition to earn a place at one of these campuses is very difficult. It includes analytical, reflective essay writing, consistent high course averages, and class placement, proficiency scores in the highest percentile on aptitude achievement and state mandated tests, strong recommendation, as well as demonstration of leadership integrity and a passion for learning and the fine arts. Covers a large area. This competition is open statewide to all eligible rising seniors in academics and to all eligible rising juniors in selected performing or visual arts area. Congratulations to the following four students who will be representing Brunswick County at this year's Governor's School. Tyler J. Cop from South Brunswick High School will be attending the east campus at Meredith College for Natural Science. Jacob J. Beamer from North Brunswick High School will be attending the west campus at Salem College for Mathematics.[1036.44][1036.44](Applause) John A. McNeil from West Brunswick High School will be attending the west campus at Salem College for Natural Science.[1051.33][1051.33](Applause) Samuel G. Zing from West Brunswick High School will be attending the west campus at Salem College for Natural Science, is also...[1065.83][1065.83](Applause) If we could get the parents of these students also to stand so we can recognize you.[1077.25][1077.25](Applause) I'm not going to stand. We'll wave at you. The 2015 Duke University Talent Identification Program, or TIP, has yielded some outstanding results for our county based on the performance of the twenty-three Brunswick County Schools' AIG seventh grade students who participated. These students took either the ACT or SAT nationally-normed test alongside high school juniors and seniors from across the country and competed with the seventh grade students from sixteen other states. Our Brunswick County seventh grade students fared quite well, earning them the following Thirteen qualified for state recognition, thirteen qualified for the Academy for Summer Studies, and two qualified for the Center for Summer Studies. Other benefits earned by all will include above-level testing experience, access to advanced education programs, educational guidance and resources, as well as special recognition of their accomplishments. The summer studies programs are intensive three-week sessions on college campuses to enrich and expand their learning opportunities and potential. The following AIG middle school students should be commended for their excellent ranking on ACT or SAT national testing, thus demonstrating their potential for even higher levels of learning. From Wachemaw School, Daniel Van Skiver.[1173.75][1173.75](Applause) State recognition for the Academy for Summer Studies. From Leland Middle School, Jordan U. Banks.[1187.15][1187.15](Applause) From Leland Middle, Samantha Smith, state recognition again for Academy of Summer Studies.[1200.01][1200.01](Applause) Peyton Walker from Leland Middle, state recognition, Academy for Summer Studies.[1211.15][1211.15](Applause) From Shalote Middle School, Colin Philman, also an Academy for Summer Studies.[1222.15][1222.15](Applause) From Shalote Middle, Cole Hutchison, Academy for Summer Studies.[1232.65][1232.65](Applause) Shalote Middle School, Allison Smith, Academy of Summer Studies.[1241.71][1241.71](Applause) South Brunswick Middle School, Cameron Auger, state recognition, Academy for Summer Studies.[1253.75][1253.75](Applause) South Middle, Emma Babson, Center for Summer Studies.[1263.58][1263.58](Applause) From South Middle, Hayden McDowell, Academy for Summer Studies.[1275.71][1275.71](Applause) Megan O'Brien from South Middle, Academy for Summer Studies.[1286.15][1286.15](Applause) From South Middle, Elizabeth Pratt, Academy for Summer Studies.[1298.75][1298.75](Applause) South Middle, Gwendolyn Simmons, Academy for Summer Studies.[1309.33][1309.33](Applause) And from South Middle, my neighbor Alexis Tudorishu.[1320.01][1320.01](Applause) Center for Summer Studies.[1325.41][1325.41](Applause) Congratulations. Cedar Grove Middle School, Lexi Hanson, Academy for Summer Studies.[1335.83][1335.83](Applause) And if we could get all of the parents to stand for this group so we can salute you Alexi and I walk dogs together an awful lot. If we could have all of the winners and all of the parents please stand at one time.[1365.65][1365.65](Applause) It's really a neat night when you're able to salute this many students at one time for so many different types of awards. We're going to take a short break so that we can kind of mingle with you as parents, and also, some of you may want to leave or you may want to stay. We'd like for you to stay if possible.
Now everyone should be able to have a seat. All right, we'll move on now to public address, and the first person on the list is Mr. Steve B. Croft.
He's not coming.
Is he not? Okay.
Should we have the attorney read?
We will when they come up. Then Jordan Crute. It's Jordan Crute here. Calling once. Calling twice. All right, we'll move on to John Weaver. John Weaver, there we go. Three tries, we got somebody, right? And we'll have the attorney read the rules for the public address to you, if you don't mind.
Copy, sir.
Oh.
Copy, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Weaver, before you begin speaking, I'm Rick Green, I'm attorney for the Board of Education. Public address matters are covered under policy number 2310. I'm going to read a portion to you and also would apply to speakers who follow you. Quoting from the policy, "Discussions regarding particularly individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to be kept confidential may not be discussed in the open meeting, open forum setting. Chairman, Mrs. Cook, will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and, if necessary, rule the discussion out of order. Each speaker will be limited to five minutes." And with that, welcome to the board and proceed with your address.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for your time. Again, my name is John Weaver. I'm a resident of Boiling Springs Lake, and I'm a parent of a current second grader at Bolivia Elementary School. Tonight, I want to speak to you about my concerns that I have over the proposed day treatment center that would be located at Bolivia Elementary School. I've given you a copy of an email that I sent. On April 20th this year, I emailed the entire school board, the superintendent, and other school personnel regarding my concerns over the day treatment center. I expressed concerns over the way the issue was handled by the board and asked specific questions about the proposal. To date, I have not received a response from any board member or anyone from the superintendent's office. The only response I received was from Ms. Owen, the principal of Bolivia Elementary School, who contacted me by phone and told me she had received my email. I also know that other parents of Bolivia students have written the board and the superintendent and have also received no responses to their letters or their emails. I would like to quickly read the highlights of my email that I sent on April 20th, which I had handed up a copy to y'all. My first concern is with the way the school board has handled and moved forward with this issue. It has been pushed forward without any chance for input from parents of Bolivia students, and it would appear that even staff members of Bolivia were not included in initial discussions. What is especially troubling for me is how the approval process for the RFP was handled by the board. The March 3rd board meetings, meeting minutes reflect the day treatment proposal was removed from the agenda for further discussion at the curriculum committee meeting. However, the day treatment center RFP was actually discussed and approved at the finance committee meeting on March the 10th, not the curriculum meeting on March the 17th. This gives the appearance that the board was being deceptive in how they were handling the public portion of this proposal. My second concern is for the safety of the current students and staff at Bolivia Elementary School and the current staffing levels. Bringing students with violent behavior and mental health issues is going to require an increase in staffing to maintain order and keep the campus safe. My question is, where are these additional resources going to come from? My son's second grade classroom currently has twenty-four to twenty-six students and no teacher's assistance for the entire grade. His classing rate are hard of the exception at the school. How many more positions can we cut and still provide a quality education? I go on to speak to a few other things about morale and retention. But I want to re, I don't want to rehash the questions and concerns that I've expressed in my original email that I sent out to y'all because the lack of any type of response to mine and other parents' email, in my mind, speaks volumes. Frankly, it leads me and others to believe that the board really just doesn't care. Since this proposal is already moving forward, I would like to address my concerns about whether or not this idea has thoroughly been thought through. A day treatment center would require additional staff, not just mental health personnel, but school personnel as well. How are these additional resources going to be funded? Have the short and the long-term implications of this program been thought out? I do not say the following things to be mean-spirited, but rather to show what looks to me to be a pattern of not thinking things through and making poor decisions that have negative consequences. For example, for what I believe was the last three years in a row, the school board flipped a lot between a traditional and staggered school start time, even though the traditional schedule costs more in transportation expenses and some loss of federal funding. Then, this past year, the board voted to return to the traditional schedule, then realized it was going to cost almost $1.7 million, and then reversed itself and voted for a staggered schedule. I will give credit, the one board member did accept responsibility for the fiasco. However, it does not negate the fact that this decision did not appear to have been thought through. In the past two fiscal years, the school board has or has attempted to give itself a raise, though it was later determined that this was not permissible and had to refund the money. Currently, the school system is facing a potential $500,000 shortfall in federal reimbursements for the free breakfast and lunch program for all the elementary and middle school students. Parents are receiving robo-calls, and children are being encouraged to eat the free breakfast and lunch so the school system can up the participation numbers so the shortfall is not as much. According to a media outlet, and I quote this from the media outlet, "District heads blame the large bill on wrong analysis and a misunderstanding of the program." So how much will a free lunch cost the taxpayers? The board, which has still not made public a logical reason as to why, voted to terminate a superintendent who had already announced his retirement. So instead of paying one superintendent for the remaining seven months of his contract, you ended up paying an interim superintendent plus remainder of Dr. Pruden's contract. I'm bringing up these issues to highlight my concern that the board has a track record of appearing to either not think things through or to make decisions that have had negative consequences for the system. I am very concerned that this program will be another example of a poorly thought-out idea that will adversely impact not only the idea that will adversely impact not only the school system, but the school that my child attends. And lastly, what I want to say, I do not by any means think that a day treatment center is a bad idea in and of itself. There is a need for mental health with children, and I firmly believe that that's important and it needs to be addressed. My concern is over the way that this has been handled by the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Madam Chairman, I know that we don't usually do this, but we have had so much discussion about this day treatment center, and there really hasn't been a final decision made. And I would like for the superintendent to at least say some of the discussions, talk about some of the discussions we've had and our discussions concerning the emails and concerns of the parents, if that's permissible.
The only thing that we've done so far is to put an RFP out, a request for proposal, to find out what the opportunities would be. And we've received three or four responses from that. And then, once we look at those responses, once we go through them and find out exactly what the cost will be, then we could be able to address your questions and give you some answers as to, one, how much it would cost, exactly what transportation pieces would be, how the transportation would be, how the safety of your children and the other children at Bolivia would be maintained. But until we go through, it was, all they asked the board was to give them the authority, the people who are looking at this on the educational piece of the, my staff, to say, let us look at this, let us look at the proposal. No decision's been made. We don't have, we are just going through the documentations of each of the people who have answered the RFP. And at a point in the very near future, then we will discuss it in the curriculum committee, and then we will probably discuss it in the finance committee also because it not only goes on the curriculum side, but it goes on the funding piece. But right now, we don't, we haven't said there's a program. We're just looking at the opportunity as to whether we can put one in place as there is in New Hanover County and four or five other counties across the state.
But just please understand that mine and other people's concern is the way this is being handled. When I go to my child's school and I speak to people in positions of authority at that school about a program that we hear is in the works, and we have to hear about it through people on Facebook, and I go to a position, a person of authority at that school, and they don't know what I'm talking about, that doesn't look good.
Oh, I agree with you.
I mean, it doesn't look good for y'all. It does not make that person look good, and it does not instill confidence that everything's being communicated properly and handled properly.
But in the process, we still haven't decided whether we even are even going to have a school there, and if we have it, will it be somewhere else? How much is it going to cost for transportation? That's, these discussions are going on, they're just continuing to go on. We're not sure yet what kind of decision we make, but we're trying to look at all the facts.
But y'all have not even gotten any input from people that it would potentially affect to our impact of what we think about it, where our children go to school, as to whether it's even a good program to have.
Well, we've gotten some calls and emails and, yes, and people talking to me on the street and...
And I understand, it's just the way that it was handled. You know, Mr. Thorson, at the March meeting, made a motion to remove it from the agenda. It was on for a consent agenda, I believe, and he made a motion to move it back to a committee. There were several of us here that were interested in it. It was moved to a committee and then passed in the committee and moved forward, which is typically opposite, you know, from the way government bureaucracy works. Typically, it's handled in a committee, moved forward, approved, not the other way around.
The law that was approved was the, was the, was the, to be able to solicit for an RFP, not the program itself.
The consent, move forward for the RFP was on the consent agenda. It was removed, sent back to a committee, and then approved in the committee, which it just gives a perception that it's not being handled in the open light.
Mr. Colonel Tubbs, didn't we mention about having a meeting at Bolivia Elementary soon to meet with parents?
Yes, sir, we have. We have, once we found, we knew what the program was going to be. We talked in the committee and we talked as a group that we wanted to have a parent meeting to discuss it, but we don't even know exactly where there are. We don't know the details right now, that are enough details to have that meeting.
Please understand that without details, it works in a vacuum, and people are going to assume and think what they say. And you're, in my humble opinion, a little bit behind the curve on educating those of us at that school.
We had to educate ourselves first. We have to know that what we're talking about and know all the details before we can tell somebody else that.
There's a lot of talk about it because you've gotten to the point of requesting proposals for the plan, so there's obviously been some discussion about it. There's been no concrete detail shared with any of the parent about how many students would be in this program. The principal didn't even know about this program. It's concerning.
Know about the program?
Excuse me?
The principal didn't know about the program?
Not initially. She was not aware that it was going to be on the agenda in March. She had heard talk about the program, but did not realize that the RFP was on the consent agenda for the March meeting until I went in there.
Well, that, I can't get into personnel.
We appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Alicia Scott. I'm also a Bolivia parent, and I'm here to discuss my concerns with the day treatment proposal. One of my concerns at this point is the inability or the lack of education to the parents because there's a couple of news articles out there. You could have at least shared that with informational letters home, letters home to parents, letting us know that this is a possibility out there. This could be on the horizon for the campus. You've already selected a campus for this proposal, so there are some details that y'all are aware of that you're just not sharing with the community, I feel. I don't feel like relying on the news feeds to foster the rumors about this program is beneficial to anybody. I have sent emails that I've also gone unanswered to, and I have addressed the rumors, just saying, these are rumors, what's the truth? And still have had no answer to these. And I'm a concerned parent. I deserve answers. And if you want to squash the rumors, you need to get the answers out there of the details that you are aware of, that you currently hold. I can readdress the emails that I have sent with y'all. Another concern is that the article that's in the Star News about the commission not allowing y'all to have any more funds, refusing to issue any more funds. How can you fund a new program that you don't know all the details of if you can't get funds to maintain what you currently have? At this point, that's all I have. I do not have five minutes worth, but I do have a lot of questions and concerns that I would appreciate answers to.
All right, well, thank you.
Chair.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask a question? There's been no decision on if we do have this, where it's going to be, right?
No.
I know I've not voted or been in a meeting involved in that, so I just want to just make clear.
If I could. This is not an excuse, but historically, matters that are administrative and yet haven't made it to the board, when parents ask questions of board members that the board hasn't deliberated over, historically, the superintendent has communicated and responded to those kinds of emails. I'd like to suggest, Mr. Tubbs, that that would be a very helpful thing for you to help us with because that, at this point, the consideration is administrative in nature. It is not something that's come to the board except for approval of the request for proposal. And that was just an information request. So if you don't mind, we can forward those sorts of emails that we simply don't know how to respond to, to you, so that you and your administrative staff can respond. And I think it would be very helpful, and it would help with that communication issue that the parents are expressing.
And I will say, not to negate either one of you, but I did respond to several emails. I don't know who they were, but when they first started coming out, I did respond to someone, and they said, and in a following email, Ms. Cook was the only one that responded. So I don't know who I responded to, but, you know, and at the time, like I said, I didn't have an answer. We just said we were looking into it. So we will have further information to satisfy the questions that you have had tonight.
Well, that's, the financial part of it is discussions that I know Ms. Cook and superintendent and I have had are concerns about the financial part of it. I know some of it might come from other agencies or other government programs, but it's just, it's a plan that's, we're trying to put together, but we're not even sure we're going to have it yet. We have to have all the information before we make, we make that decision, and it's going, it may take a file longer.
All right, Mr. Fred Ammon.
Good evening. There are a couple stories I want to comment on. On April 22nd, Ms. Cahill, the director of finance, indicated that the district would be out of money in two years for capital outlay. She basically used the word "on life support." This year, she seems to indicate that there's a $152,000 shortfall, and next year, you're going to be 3.5 million deficit without a major funding infusion. Kind of like that word, infusion. Now, I understand tonight you're going to, as a board, vote on bringing a $173 million bond referendum, and I hope you do, and I hope that passes in 2016 because anyone who supports schools should be willing to put their money where their mouth is, and you have my vote. I also applaud the two resolutions, the resolutions you sent out to the general assembly, asking them to change the way they're funding education. They basically were anti-education bills. Now, Ms. Cook, as a last resort, I was hoping that you could do some dinner table lobbying, but I understand that the county commissioners didn't, didn't buy it.
They didn't matter.
I'll keep trying.
But we are, we are going to Raleigh tomorrow.
Okay, well, I was going to say, that makes you our last great hope because I know you have strong Republican connections. I've seen the pictures of you at the national convention, so I know you must have some clout in Raleigh, and hopefully you can pull some strings up there.
Hope so.
Okay, now, the second story kind of confuses me because, because a couple days later, there was an article in the Star News that said that the Brunswick aims to update the athletic facilities. And tonight, if I, if I'm correct, you're going to vote on a $97,000 contract with the Wilmington consulting firm. No, I get it, sports are important. I mean, I wrestled and ran track in high school and college. My three kids played three school sports each, but why now? And where is that money coming from? And what are you getting for the $97,000? If I, if I read the contract correctly, that that company's going to do a school analysis, they're going to meet with staff and public and gather, and gather input, and then they're going to present a master plan with their recommendations. That sounds rather expensive to me for two months' worth of work. And where is the millions going to come for the price tag once they do come back with their recommendations? Now, I'm going to save you $97,000. You have three athletic directors in the high schools. Let them talk to the coaches, the parents, the players, see what they need. They can do their own school analysis. They can make their own recommendations. They also should be familiar with the Title IX and the North Carolina High School Athletic Association compliance issues. And they can get together with the county rec directors to talk about shared opportunities. I'm sure you can give them a couple thousand dollars as a stipend for doing the extra work to do those recommendations, but at one time, I thought that was the job of an athletic director. Which brings me to any money you have left over from that $97,000. There's a young lady over here who I admire very much, who comes every month to the board with the teacher's voice, and she always asks for your philosophical and your financial support. I'm sure if you ask Casey Smith, she'll give you some suggestions on how you can spend that $97,000 in helping with teacher retention and mentoring program and morale. Now, the third story appeared just the other day, and it appears that we have a lot of high school, or the parents of high school students who owe $50,000 worth of unpaid school lunches. And that's a lot of frozen waffles and peanut butter sandwiches. And I think your own spokesman said that's a teaching position. Well, actually, I checked, that's a teaching position with 15 years' experience and a masters. You can almost get two first-year teachers for that amount of money. But it seems that after a $10, $10 grace period, you've made calls and sent out emails, but nothing's working, and tonight you're considering bringing in a collection agency. I don't know whether you want to go there because if, if the parents didn't respond to your, to your polite calls and emails, they're not going to respond to a collection agency, and you're probably not going to recoup the money, and the, and the collection agency's probably going to get a lot of it anyway. I do have a suggestion. Let the high school students have one free lunch. After that, they pay off with a cutoff. We have to teach personal responsibility as well. So, how am I doing on time?
Not too good.
Thanks for, thanks for your promotion of the bond issue.
Okay. And need help?
Thank you.
And by the way, that money for the athletic piece has been pulled off, and we're not doing that right now.
Oh, you're not going there? Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Albert Say.
Hi. Is this on? I'm not from Bolivia, and I'm not going to talk about money, so I'm going to try to be quick and brief. I have some folders I'd like to give the board members, Colonel Tubbs, the attorney, So, the reason I'm here tonight, right after Colonel Tubbs was appointed superintendent, I was at the NCAE state convention, and while we were there, I attended a session on litigation issues. Some positive things came up that I think will help you and Dr. Tubbs improve teacher morale, and Colonel Tubbs had mentioned that that was his primary goal. The first, and there's two sides in the folder. One deals with its reinstatement of career status, but it's not really reinstatement of career status. The state won't allow you to call it career status. It won't change on the teacher's evaluations, but there are actions you can take. Wake County has already gone forward with this. NCAE is willing to help you write the contracts and legislation. It's basically just giving teachers some job security. Instead of a contract non-renewal, before you do that in May, you can simply tell the teacher why their contract is not being renewed, give them 10 days to appeal that decision. For teachers that have three years and good standing, you can actually reinstate the old contracts listing the exact reasons for termination, again, giving them an appeals process. You can work anywhere within that. It costs no money. You'd be the only county, other than Wake County in the state, to do that for their teachers. It costs you nothing. It could actually save you in litigation. NCAE is currently handling civil cases on discrimination for contract or non-renewal without giving any explanation why. The second thing is 12-month pay. The legislation on that's changed. I noticed Thursday that finance posted a form to sign, for teachers to sign to be, to have 12-month pay reinstated. There are a lot of teachers that would like to have that back, and it's a simple matter of just making that public. Letting teachers of new teacher orientation know that it's available, letting the principals tell their teachers and staff at the last faculty meeting at the end of the year, here are the forms, if you'd like 12-month pay, sign here, and it's a done deal. I've been fighting that battle for about eight years now. So that's all I really have. I'm also slated on the May 19th policy meeting with you, so at that time, if you have other questions, or we can have some more discussion. That's it. Thank you.
And then we move on to our presentations, and the first one is Ms. Sarah Osborne on Or representatives. And you give us your names, please, if you don't mind.
Hello, I'm Clarissa Summers.
My name is Hannah Peever. I am a sophomore at Early College High School. On April 17th, I along with 100 other sophomores and 50 middle schoolers from around the county participated in STEM Speaks. STEM Speaks was created and organized by the Brunswick County STEM Council. STEM Speaks is an opportunity for... STEM Speaks is an opportunity for students in Brunswick County to hear from local STEM industry workers about their careers right here in the county. It is also a chance for STEM industries to speak to their future task force, and a way for sophomores to start thinking about specific careers they want to enter. In STEM Speaks, I learned that there was a lot of opportunity in Brunswick County. I wasn't aware that BCC has a very successful nursing program and a very successful welding program. I also was not aware of the many plants that use engineers in the county. I didn't know that Corning was in Wilmington, and then there was ADM, and we had a lot of representatives from all the plants. The speaker I enjoy the most was chemical engineering, because the speaker participated in a lot of research when she was in college. She even researched solo panels that use a certain bacteria that did photosynthesis. So, instead of using metals and things that you can't renew, she used bacteria which can grow on their own. I also learned that I do not want to be a civil engineer. I would rather do, like, chemistry or biology because of the research. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I also have a gift on behalf of the STEM Council. And I'm Shigun Zhou. I'll introduce myself again. My name is Hannah Peeper, and I'm a sophomore attending South Brunswick High School. My experience at the STEM conference was new and eventful. I learned a lot about the different arenas and fields of science, technology, engineering, and math. Being that I aspire to enter the medical field, science and math are my favorite study subjects, as they are very important to me. So, getting to actually see and meet the engineers that spoke at the conference is very helpful, knowing that there are people out there who spark the same interest as I do. Listening to them speak about what colleges they went to and the journey they took to get to where they are today was very useful, especially since knowing that I'll be leaving for college in a few years to begin my own journey. When trying to plan ahead for your future, every little bit of information helps in shaping the start to your journey. I truly appreciate all the time and effort that was put into the STEM conference, as well as the opportunity I had to go and participate in it and learn more about my interests. Thank you to everyone who helped make STEM possible.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And I'd just like, I'd just like to add, I was not short of a t-shirt. I received my t-shirt at the STEM Speaks conference, and I enjoyed eating lunch with the students. It really was a great program, and I learned a lot from the different representatives that were there. But then, I think the best part for me was just sitting down and eating lunch with the kids and learning about what they want to do and where they want to go.
And they really liked the video, didn't they?
Yeah, they did.
I'm wondering why you didn't show that video tonight. I thought that was one of the best things that happened there.
All right, and our next, Ms. Casey Smith, our Teacher's Voice.
I'll be happy to show it one night.
Well, first, I just want to say congratulations to parents and students that are still here, and to those teachers that were named or unnamed, if they're here or not, to stand behind those students. But, parents, you're the first teachers, so congratulations on your students' achievements. And I briefly want to follow up on what Mr. Zay commented about. I had sent an email to you guys a couple weeks back about that exact program, I think, in Wake County. So, that's along the lines of exactly what he was talking about. So, first, I have to say Feliz Cinco de Mayo. I would be remiss, as a Spanish scholar and teacher, to not mention that. It's the 5th of May, Cinco de Mayo, and it's not Mexican Independence Day. This is a common misconception. Cinco de Mayo remembers the Mexicans' win over the French in the Battle of Puebla in 1862. That was a huge win for them, as they were far outnumbered. So, the celebration that we have taken on, even in the United States, is one that celebrates pride and nationalism. So, I have to mention that. Like, it's Cinco de Mayo. I have to say that. Now, transitioning. The theme or the topic I'm going to talk about tonight is "It's That Time of Year." And I have, while sitting here tonight, scribbled through one of the paragraphs that I have prepared in the interest of everyone's time. So, let me continue here. This is the time of year in all of our schools. When you hear the expression, "It's that time of year," said several times a day by many different adults. For schools, spring means that summer is not far away. While the awareness of that fact brings so many exciting feelings, there is no shortage of stressors. For teachers, the biggest stressors are the lower-than-usual student motivation, the impending state-required tests, and the general frazzled nature of ourselves and our colleagues, particularly at this time of year. "It's that time of year," quote, "it's that time of year when our kids just don't care." Now, low student motivation is always a huge concern for classroom teachers in today's public school. This time of year, low motivation often transforms into none. So, not only do they have their eyes set on summer, but they've also worked for hours and hours and weeks upon weeks. They're all tired, and we're all tired, and it shows in our classrooms. It's that time of year, testing time. The looming of end-of-grade and end-of-course tests and all that they require and signify adds an extra layer of anxiety for teachers and our principals that just cannot be precisely described to the general public. There is the final push to include and review every bit of knowledge and critical thinking skills that your grade or your subject standards require, and to squeeze that last little bit out of your students as the last weeks pass. There is the training for administering the tests. This training is required by law, and in one afternoon after school, we will spend an hour to an hour and a half completing it. We will learn the high points of the test administrator's instruction booklet, and we will sign our names in strict confidentiality, not only that we were present for training, but that we all read, we all will read, the entire book prior to testing. Now, I won't mention the extra pressure that our assistant principals oftentimes are experiencing during this time, as they are often responsible for coordinating testing. Then there are the actual tests, several days of them in a row, in which your entire routine and schedule are thrown upside down, and the whole school turns into a testing ground. Confidentiality, silence, scripted words from the test book only, and chaperoned walks for restroom breaks are the norm while testing occurs. As a teacher, all you can do is stand there. You administer and monitor quietly, and you nervously wonder how your students will perform. You know that no matter where Student A was when he came to you in August, or December, or in April, you're now responsible for where he ends up. You know that no matter what life has thrown at Student B in the past week or month, or even last night, this day and this test defines a large part of their career as a student, and defines a large part of your career as a teacher, or your success, rather. You know that no matter how much Student C has improved in their social and emotional skills over the course of the year, the tests they are taking right now will never recognize those achievements. And you know that even though Student D has worked her tail off all year long in your class and has a solid A or B to show for it, she's just one of those students that is going to struggle and probably underperform on test day. And her test scores are going to reflect that. They're going to reflect your effectiveness as a teacher, and most importantly, her confidence is going to be affected because of that. You also know that Student E has been to the school counselor's office a lot lately. You understand it is because of the bullying he is experiencing while he grapples with his own sexual orientation, and you figure that the test is the least of his worries right now. So, now, we're going to get positive. Why do we keep coming back? What keeps us going this time of year? Those colleagues that I mentioned before, the same ones which we share unique and unrivaled camaraderie with. Teachers are the only people in the universe who understand just what this profession is like day-to-day, and especially at this time of year. We lean on one another. We crack jokes and passing to keep one another sane. We share encouraging words just when someone else needs to hear them. What else keeps us going? You know that low-to-little student motivation I mentioned? This time of year, our adrenaline pulls out that last little bit of motivation in our students. Our adrenaline comes from the small victories that we see. There are the averted emotional and behavioral crises that were not so much preventable before. For example, Student G, who has been having outbursts daily and confrontation after confrontation with peers and teachers, is finally starting to speak with everyone, to everyone, with a respectful tone. Then there's Student H, who has struggled on most days in class and with homework, but he always comes prepared with a smile and a positive attitude. So, when that light flickers for him this time of year, it is nothing short of a miracle, and it is celebrated as such for him and his teacher. And for Students I, J, K, L, all the way through Z, the relationships we formed up until this point are rock-solid, and that is a victory that will last a lifetime. These are the victories that feed us as teachers. They give us, and as a result, our students, the motivation to arrive at the finish line of June 10th. Last thing that keeps us going, and this is my personal favorite. We know that those tests and their results will never fully define our successfulness or effectiveness as teachers. We know that there are achievements and accomplishments that will never, ever be measured by a standardized test. The successes we know well have to do with physical growth, emotional improvement, and social skills that are needed to survive and thrive in today's world. Those types of successes, along with the academic ones, are what we teachers hold most sacred. No one, no superior, no educational theorist, no legislator, no one can ever take those successes away from us by telling us that our students performed this way or that way on a standardized test. So, in conclusion, these last few weeks of our school year, and especially this week, which is National Teacher Appreciation Week, Staff Appreciation Week in Brunswick County, let's everybody take the opportunity to reach out to our teachers, pat them on the back, send them a kind email, leave them a friendly voicemail, and just thank them for their service. Because I can tell you from my personal position, and even from what I've heard from TAC members, that is the number-one thing that they value the most. So, those types of recognition, those are the types that fuel our adrenaline. And I would like to say, teachers, if you're present, or you can spread this word, let's lead this way in gratefulness. Let's be the first ones to extend our thanks to those staff around us who make our day-to-day jobs easier or more successful. That's all I have this evening. Thank you for your attention.
I know I'm talking a lot tonight, but she made, you made some statements in there, Ms. Smith, about the testing and about the way the state is deciding what grades to give schools, and I'd just like for us to carry that with us to Raleigh tomorrow, when we speak with Senator Raven and Representative Iler, and probably some of the other senators and representatives up there, from a teacher's point of view of how we feel like that it might not be fair, and it isn't fair, the way that we're being graded.
Well, you know, the philosophy behind standardized tests is with good intentions. You know, it's about having accountability.
Right.
But certainly, sometimes, you know, theory put into practice is when we learn, and, you know, sometimes changes need to be made. But I really, you know, tonight, what I wanted to say was to you all, but it was also for just the general public to understand, you know? I mean, I think most parents know, because they hear from their students, they know what those days are like, and there is a lot of anxiety. I mean, it is such a pressure situation for teachers and students and principals. So, certainly, you know, models moving towards growth instead of just achievement and proficiency. You know, when we looked at that report card several weeks back, that was, what, 80% achievement?
Eighty, twenty.
Eighty percent focus on achievement and just 20% on growth.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
So, yeah, you know, definitely growth models. I think most teachers, right now, they see the value in that, and they see the better sense of accomplishment when you're talking academics, and that's not even getting into all the other areas that our students are truly growing or achieving.
Well, I do know that it makes a big difference. These senators and representatives, they have about 900 bills that they're going to decide about, and having been up there many times, the person who walks in that office and has some information in their hand and sits down and talks with them, that's what stays in their mind when they're going in to make their decisions.
Yeah.
Well, I went up there one time and was asked, while I was there, by Representative Iler, if I'd like to speak to the Education Committee, because they were meeting at that time. And then, the lady from the North Carolina School Board Association, about a minute before they were going to meet, came over and asked if I'd like to speak to them. And after I got my breath back, I said, what I had done, I had gone to the Finance Director here, and I had her to write down how that bill was going to affect one county. So, when I spoke to the Education Committee, I told them I knew they had to look at the big picture, but I told them, this is how it affects a school system where we are. Dr. Prudential called me the next morning. He said, "Do you know they put 32 amendments to that bill?" So, it does make a difference sometimes.
Yeah.
And I think, if you can hand this to Catherine or me, we can point out some of the statements you made, too.
Yeah, and I would add to that, just as far as, like, awareness and communication on the Teacher's Voice webpage, every legislative update that comes from the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, I place on that page. And there are tons and tons of bills on each floor, so.
When I handed it, now, Senator Raven that day had already, the Senate had voted on this bill. He's not aware of how it was affecting us. He's thinking, "Can I have a copy of that?" But it's just, like I said, their minds are on so many things until it's important that we put what we think is best for the children and the teachers of the state in front of them.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hey, Casey. I want to know where your blue jeans are.
Where are you talking about?
Now, I still want to...
Teachers are professionals. Dress professionally. I wore jeans to school.
But we're celebrating, and all of your friends out...
Staff Appreciation Week.
And all of your friends out here are wearing blue jeans, so.
I'm glad they are. They should be. But, you know, there's some people that have been here that didn't know that, or they might have seen, and I don't want them to think that I, you know, I just wear jeans to school every day.
I couldn't let you get by. Thank you for what you do.
All right, and now our...
Kathy has her hand raised. Kathy Owens.
She has her hand up.
Ask her to come to the...
Ms. Owens.
Would you come up here, please, so everybody can hear you?
Good evening. I just wanted to thank Central Office for helping all the schools celebrate teacher appreciation, employee appreciation, by sending a cake to each school and helping us with some funds so we can help celebrate with our employees. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And if you'll throw in the...
And the blue jeans.
Yeah, throw in the, tell them about, explain the blue jeans, because not everybody may understand about the blue jeans.
Part of the week in celebrating is that all of the faculty and staff were allowed to wear blue jeans all week. And so, I had harassed Casey earlier about the blue jeans outside when we first met, and that's why I had to ask her again. I knew she'd turn red, but anyway, thank you, Casey, for what you do. And thank you, teachers, for what you do, too. It's great to see you here.
And now, we have our school spotlight.
Well, it's hard to believe that we are down to our last three spotlights for this school year. It's amazing how fast this year's gone by. So, we do have three tonight. We were afraid that the June one, we would be lost because school would be out, and the school would not be given adequate recognition. So, we're going to start tonight with Belleville Elementary School.
Our goal at the elementary level is to provide that foundation, foundation in mathematical reasoning, in literacy fluency, and comprehension. So, our teachers really work to provide differentiated lesson plans that emphasize the standards, but also provide that 21st-century rigor, where students are building problem-solving skills, communication skills, critical thinking skills, that definitely will help prepare them for that middle school, high school, and college and career level.
I'm just so glad that we landed at Belleville, because the feeling here is just wonderful, and I don't worry about my children when I send them to school. I don't have to be nervous about that, and I also feel that, you know, they're getting a really good education.
It's a positive behavior intervention support system we have here, PBIS School. The students, every day, throughout the day, they're able to earn positive shark tickets, and they're able to go and cash those in at our shark store. We want students to use the technology as a way of learning, as a way of researching, as a way of producing products that showcase their learning. as a way of producing products that showcase their learning. The staff here are committed to go above and beyond. They really work to build positive quality relationships with the students, to really listen to the needs that they have.
I would say that the staff holds high expectations for our students, but we also show them a lot of love and kindness, and we, you know, just try to help them succeed in every way possible.
We have awesome teachers here that have been here for years. I feel that I have an experience with my kids coming through, that they receive what they need in order for them to make it and to grow in a higher education for college and even further.
Volunteering in the classroom through different things a teacher may need, or working one-on-one with students or small groups, as well as for larger school-wide events. We have that input here now, that parents and community members are vested in making a difference at Belleville.
My volunteers, they're awesome. We have a lot of volunteers. I really appreciate the volunteers that just come as soon as we call, or if we send out a memo early, they're here.
I really like this school, because almost everybody's really nice.
Here, the way that our team works together and helps one another, we really have the students' best interests at mind, and we do our best to help them succeed.
Belleville Elementary is the best school I've ever been to. It's fun. The teachers are very active. They teach you rights. They teach you wrongs, what to do, what not to do, and they prepare you for life.
Please join in welcoming Principal Kelly Andrews up to the podium.
Well, I have to ask you, where was your hat? It must have been Hat Day.
I do need to explain that. We are a uniformed school, but as you can see, many of the staff and students were wearing hats. It was a part of Think Green Week. And another part of Belleville Elementary is that we support the community and the needs of the community, and so the St. Baudry Foundation. And we have a student at our school that has had cancer, and so is a part of our efforts in raising money to help support research against childhood cancer. That was Hat Day, so lots of hats around the school. But I do want to say thank you for the opportunity to work in Brunswick County schools, and particularly at this time, at Belleville Elementary School. It's a great place to go every day to work, because you know, at some point, you're going to be helping children, you're going to be helping staff and parents. It is a great community at Belleville, and I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to work there and serve that community. In an effort, we are always trying to have continuous improvement for students' academic success, for their social, emotional development, and also that our school, the facilities there, work effectively, function the way that we need things to work, so that not only we do have a safe school from, as far as relationships, but we also have a safe school because it's a clean place, it's well-kept, it's up-to-date with things working. And as you could see in the video, there are always those ongoing needs that we have that we're working to address. I'll say Central Services, they're always proactive in working with us to identify what the needs are. And so, I appreciate that support. You know, we have around 800 students at our school, and so that's a lot of trips to the bathroom every day. And so, you know, keeping facilities, bathrooms, all those things working and up-to-date is certainly a constant goal and something on our radar that we're always looking for. So, we, thanks for the, thank you for the continued support financially and in any other way that you guys reach out to us every day. So, thank you.
Sanders, have you started using the Belleville Classroom yet on the River, or the Duke?
No, we've participated in some of the brand opening ceremonies. It's not quite at the point that we can kind of go over there yet, but it is coming along nicely.
Yeah. You're being pretty modest about school conditions. Share with the board your current population and the average classroom size, if you don't mind.
Sure. We're right there at the 800 mark. You know, every day, someone's coming in, someone's leaving, but we're around the 800 mark. Pretty much every classroom in the school is full. We are anticipating even next year needing a couple of additional classes. So, we're, you know, at that point, we're looking at possibly having music class or guidance class on wheels from class to class, so we can ensure we've got those, you know, homeroom solid classes in place. But it is a growing, a growing area, and we're, again, talking with Central Services and kind of anticipating, you know, the future growth that's going to be coming.
What is your teacher ratio to student, class sizes?
It can vary. Some of our classrooms, we, you know, may have 20, 22, 23. We do have some that are more like 25, 26. So, it kind of varies based on the grade level and where the influx is.
And in your lower classes, your K2, you share your TAs?
We do. Some of them in kindergarten, we have a teacher assistant in every kindergarten class, and then as it kind of moves up, first-grade teacher assistants are split between two teachers. Then in second grade, it's, you know, fewer, and kind of, you know, as it goes up. But we try to work on a weekly basis to provide support where we need it, for teachers to have that common extended planning time together, but also provide that supervision for the students.
But you understand how important the TAs are to the teachers in those classrooms?
Definitely, definitely.
How many did you say? I think you lost in the last two or three years, teacher's aid positions.
Teacher assistant positions.
I'm sorry, when I was working in school, it was called teacher's aids.
Right, right. I mean, it's a couple, kind of, you know, each year. It's kind of, I think, been the average. So, we're kind of anticipating probably the same this coming year.
One more quick question.
More to come on that.
Do you have any facility where you can talk to or address in a group your 800 students in one location? I mean, that, I'm trying to figure out what it must be like to have 800 elementary students. How many?
Smell.
799 was the last count, was probably over 800 right now.
We have one assistant principal, one guidance counselor.
And you need additional APs, don't you?
They work very hard every day.
And we have that on the budget, but it's below the line, I understand.
Wow.
But thank you for the human resource supports as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next school is Lincoln Elementary School.
I think that Lincoln is a very special place. Our students and staff have a lot of energy and excitement about being at school. Our kids are happy to be here, and I think really enjoy their time at Lincoln. We focus on the concept of leadership here. So, one of our PBIS, Positive Behaviors Interventions and Supports, our main theme is in leadership. So, we focus on the term "lead," and that's leadership, engagement, attitude, and discipline of self. So, everything we do when we communicate with the kids is talking about them being leaders at Lincoln.
PBIS program has been very helpful with the students in showing them the expectations that the teachers and administration expect here at Lincoln. And I believe that the kids have taken ownership in the program. They've learned that, you know, there's characteristics of a leader that they need to show, and being positively rewarded for those characteristics has encouraged them to do a better job of leading, whether they're in the classroom or outside the classroom. So, it pretty much happens throughout the school.
I really want to make a difference in a child's life. I want them to show a lot of growth from the time that they come to me in August till they leave in June, and I think that's the most exciting part. And that's one of the special things about kindergarten, because really, you can see that growth.
At Lincoln Elementary, we work hard to, as teachers and staff members, to build a community of learners, a community of leaders. We also expect the kids to be college and career-ready whenever they leave, and we hope that they'll come back to the community and be a part of the community in which we're currently working in.
To come here, to Lincoln or to a public school in Brunswick County, you get that diversity that you don't get in other places. So, I feel it's important for a child to understand, there are all kinds of people in the world. There are all kinds of people. They learn differently, they look differently.
I think Lincoln is a very special place, and part of it is the diversity of the students and staff here. We feel like our kids come from so many different backgrounds and have so much to share with each other, but also, we try to make sure that our community has a community feel to it.
It's a safe place. The people that are here are loving, they're caring, and we work together as a team.
And I think you'll see, as you walk through our school building, it's a very inviting place. It's a place where hopefully, parents are welcomed and volunteers are welcomed, and the kids are made to feel special.
I'm happy to be a Lincoln Leopard, because it's a lot of fun things you can do around here. You have friends to be there, teachers to help you, and a whole lot of things to learn, so, go Leopards!
I love coming to school every day, because I get to learn. Go Leopards!
Please join in being welcoming Principal Molly White.
So, go Leopards!
We don't have to ask who your mascot is.
I'm, sorry, that just really gets me. First of all, I want to say, I can't believe it's been two years ago that I was sitting from all of you when you invited me to come here. And I am so incredibly, I did not expect to be a little choked up, sorry, to, to, to serve these kids, these teachers, and these families is such a pleasure for me. And I say "serve" because that's what it is all about for me. I'm in this profession, and I've shared this many times, and I hope you know that this is true. My goal is to help break the cycle of poverty for our kids. And I think everything that was demonstrated there says it beautifully, and I think the word I kept hearing from people that I think got me is that caring environment. That's one of my biggest goals, is to have that consistent caring environment for our kids. The academics are huge, but they need to feel safe and cared for first. And those people that you saw there, those adults, do such an amazing job of that, and Ms. Freeman said it the best, that's what got me when I saw her speak. I think it's kind of cool that we don't see these till tonight, although now I'm all, I'm all done. So, I just want to, you know, talk about some of our instructional focus as well, to get myself together, because that's my business part of things. We are very proud of what you saw with the leadership. I do feel that that's part of breaking the cycle of poverty for our kids. It comes from instilling them as leaders in our school, which hopefully will make them be leaders when they go to Leland Middle School, and then when they go on to high school. All those kids we saw honored here tonight, I just kept thinking, I can't wait till I've been here long enough to come in here and take pictures of those kids and see that they have done it. And I really think that the potential is amazing for our kids. They're brilliant, and they're happy, and they love to come to school, and I think that's all we need to mold them into what they're going to become. The staff at Lincoln is the most amazing group of people I have ever worked with. I don't know how this happens, but you know, when your worlds collide and you're where you're supposed to be, this is what I feel right now. It is a dedicated staff that is committed every day to what is best for those children. I very rarely ever have to deal with drama or things that are about adult problems. It is always about the kids at Lincoln. And I am so proud to be a part of that community. I always tell the teachers and other staff members, you know, I don't want to be anybody's boss, I want to be your coach and your cheerleader, and let me do that for you, let me celebrate you. This week is also, I think, kind of an emotional one, because we're celebrating our staffs, and we try to do that all year, but we kind of go all out. So, to deliver Friday morning to our teachers flowers for the teacher and the TA of the year, and our rookie of the year, and to honor those other folks that were nominees, was just really special at our school. So, our instructional focuses, obviously, is the concept of leadership and putting that into what we do. And then we're really focusing on literacy. And I know, you know, we all know that that's the cornerstone of elementary education. If our kids are great readers and writers, they can do anything. And so, we have some strong focus with that right now, too. I invite, I look forward to the board visit, so you can see some of the work we're doing in regards to our literacy. It's a strong focus for us. We've made some big investments this year with our instructional supply money, and I'm very proud of where we're going with that. So, I think that's great. The other side of the thing that we talked about is, of course, the 1957 original date. And I would say, our building, I have been impressed, and I'm just going to tell a quick story, when my husband came to the school for the first time, and, you know, I was telling him about it before, that it's an older school and everything, and he walked through right before, the weekend before we come back, because I just said, "I want to do one more walk-through with fresh eyes." He's an engineer, so he sees everything. And I'm like, "What are we missing? You know, what does it look like?" And he, like, was floored. He's like, "This building is beautiful." We had driven by it, you know, outside before, and it looks dated from the outside, although there's been great work done with landscaping. So, I am proud of what the building looks like. It's just like what Belleville is. It's clean, it's well-kept, the technology is incredible. We're so fortunate. But what's behind the walls is our biggest concern right now. Our HVAC is really, really tough at the start of the year and starting right now. I would love to share an email I got today from a teacher who quoted a song about it getting hot in here, because...
What are you doing?
I'm not going to do it, I'm not going to do it.
Sure, they probably don't know this song.
It's like Groundhog Day for them with our HVAC. And it is really, it's either just blazing hot, and it's kind of hallway to hallway, and they have been persistent about trying to figure this out. We get it fixed, and then it just, it kind of snaps back. So, I know you guys know all these things, and that's why we're a high priority with the referendum, and I appreciate that. But I think what we have is great, and it's exciting to think about another opportunity for us. There are a lot of leaks that aren't from the roof. We've talked about the new roof and all those things. It's actually coming from the HVAC, and it's, the slips and falls are big concerns for us. So, I guess I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to serve. I am obviously touched, you can tell, and I just, I appreciate the support of everyone here, and every, that I have felt from everyone since I've come to Brunswick County. I'm very glad that I have made this my home.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for all you do. Yes, thank you.
Any questions?
I would just say you're in good company. Some of us are considered touched as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. White. And our final school spotlight for the 2014-15 school year is North Brunswick High School.
When you walk into the doors, you're going to find an atmosphere where there's a staff that care about students. We welcome them, we want what's best for them, and we're going to try and make sure that they have success every day.
North Brunswick, to me, is just a very happy place here. It seems like the staff is happy, the kids are happy, they're engaged.
North Brunswick is like a family. They are concerned about all kids here, and they want to make sure that the kids are successful and that the parents are included in that educational process.
We have a qualified staff that know what their task is, and they're planning, they're working in their PLCs to make sure that they are incorporating strategies that are going to best suit our students' needs.
Something that I tell my students every day, that I don't really invest in 401Ks, I invest in them. They are my contributions to a future in a world that I believe in. Everything I do, my blood and my sweat for them nightly, is to help them develop into productive citizens that are capable of shaping the world.
The students line up to take JRTC courses at North Brunswick. They are very active in the community. They provide support within the community.
We have had kids go on to college and become officers in the military, so we think that we have a great program, and we don't think there's a better character education program on this campus.
Scorpion Academy is for the purpose of tutoring. It's for the purpose of helping our students to master objectives that they haven't already. In order to be released from Scorpion Academy, students must be on the A or AB Honor Roll. It's a program that we have cultivated and tweaked, it's unique to North Brunswick, and we are really proud of it.
My freshman year, we had this program that we have now called Scorpion Academy, and so that program that we have now really helps me out with my academics. So, in case I need some extra teaching or I have a question I need to ask, I can go there for 30 minutes at the end of the day.
All of our CTE programs, the technology programs are well-advanced, and those teachers have the students in, they can become certified with the different types of certification that they can take those and go out into the workforce and acquire jobs. We want every child to experience success as they enter North Brunswick and when they leave North Brunswick. As they enter North Brunswick and when they leave North Brunswick, they're prepared to go out into a world that they can be successful.
I'm very grateful to come to North Brunswick High School. I feel like the family atmosphere is very important, and for me, it's made a high school a very positive and more enjoyable experience, and it's something that I'll remember forever.
And please join me in welcoming Principal Sheila Grady from North Brunswick.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening!
Good evening!
I know it's getting late.
It's just getting started.
For us, it's just getting started.
We haven't even approved the agenda yet.
With many, many thanks. Uh, thank you, Board and Central Office, Central Services staff, for, um, celebrating with us this week, the staff appreciation. I call it staff appreciation because all of our staff members are celebrating not just the teachers, we're celebrating everyone this week. So we really appreciate the cake this morning, it was delicious, and, uh, we had a little ice cream to go with it as well. Uh, at North Brunswick, we are doing many things. We are moving, and, uh, there, if you come by the campus, you will see a lot of moving and shaking going on. So, we, we are very grateful for everything that's happening there. Um, we have a wonderful staff, and I'll tell you, I've been talking with some of them, and they're so excited because just what we might consider simple things, once it's gone, you really miss it. Uh, all of the growth that has occurred in the Leland area caused teachers to lose their planning periods. And, but they didn't, you know, they were so gracious, they have been so gracious since I've been there in sharing their space. But many of them have said, since the new mobile units, uh, have been open for us to use, uh, we've been able to occupy them, you know, they have mentioned, Ms. Grady, it's so nice to have my planning space back, and just to be able to get in there and to plan, because they do put a lot of time in that, and the purpose is for their students to be successful. And that is our goal, is to have much success at North Brunswick High School. Um, again, we are so grateful to the Board, to the County Commissioners, everyone that has had a hand in hearing the need and acting on it. My very first year at North Brunswick, realizing the overcrowdedness and teachers having to share their space during their planning, not having a planning actually, uh, because they would have to, we would make sure everyone had some space, we had every little nook and cranny. Uh, it became an office, because we wanted teachers to have a space that they could say, okay, I can put my purse down, I can put my coat down, and, uh, and that was their space, because they did not have a classroom. There were 13 teachers on carts, and it was, it, but, but they dealt with it, and we dealt with it. So at this point, it's just wonderful seeing the new parking lot being constructed, and we know what's coming next. So, um, again, thank you, I don't want to take up too much time, but we want to make sure that our students are career and college ready when they leave, and the planning that goes into teaching can be done so much more effectively when teachers are in a space that they're comfortable and in an environment that is conducive to learning. So again, thank you, and have a great staff, teacher appreciation week as well.
So that is the school spotlights for this school year, and I want to again say thank you to videographer Billy Lewis, who was able to take concepts and make them come to life, and I really want to say thank you for that, Billy, top notch. And we'll also see what we can get into next, so we'll look forward to our next endeavors. Thank you very much.
And those are also on the website.
On the website?
So each school is on the website.
On the website, there is a scrolling banner and it says, "School Spotlights."
You can go home and cry tonight, Ms. White.
They're also on our YouTube page as well. So they're very accessible, and we're also going to be embedding them all on every school's webpage as well, so, look forward to, and ATM C is actually running them for us now as well, so.
They are. I, I look at that quite often, enjoy that.
All right. I'm going to take a little, five minutes. Okay. All right, now we've come to the exciting part of the meeting, where we have the approval of the meeting agenda.
Madam Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the superintendent has asked if I will add the, uh, Brunswick County Agreement that the County Commissioner took this for us to vote on tonight.
All right.
And I'll just wait until we do that to have some comments, and you might want to too, because we've had three meetings with them about this same issue.
So will we put that on? That needs to go under Action?
Yeah, Action Number Two.
So that'll be the second action item? Okay, and that's the funding agreement with the Commissioner.
Madam Chair, if we could, um, I would like to suggest that we change the PAC meeting date. Um, we have, it's regularly scheduled for, and we put this under Action also, scheduled for May the 12th, and we have a big celebration at Jesse May on May the 12th, and in looking at the calendar for May, every night it's filled up just about, but May 18th is open.
And what night is that?
That's a Monday night.
Well, since we are practicing in the word Easter, I think I can miss choir practice.
And that's still a town creek.
Still a town creek, yes. That way we can get all of it, and not...
Madam Chairman, I make a motion to approve the agenda with the additions added.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Ms. Babson, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the consent of, with the approval of minutes. The minutes for the March 31st, April 21st Operations Committee, Human Resources Committee, and the Finance Committee.
Madam Chairman, I had, uh, called, um, our administrative assistant, and I, I must have been written just like it was said, okay, because I thought something was there that I had heard a different way in one of the, uh, uh, public speeches, but... I'll make a motion that we approve the minute for March 31st, uh, 2015 Regular Meeting, April 21st, 2015 Operations Committee, April 21st, 2015 Human Resources Committee, April 21st, 2015 Finance Budget Work Session.
All right, have a motion, Madam Babson?
I'll second.
Second. All in favor of approval of the minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to the consent items for approval. Policies for first reading, second reading.
Somebody make a motion.
Motion to approve.
All right, have a motion by Mr. Miller?
I second.
All right, second one. All in favor of approval of the consent items?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Move on to action items, uh, first being the resolution to request a bond referendum in 2016 election. Who would like to speak to that?
Madam Chairman, uh, we, of course, we had discussed this at the liaison committee with the County Commissioners this past week, and, uh, we, it's been brought up several times, when they talk about Lincoln, how, part of Lincoln is over 50 years old, part of a lot of schools are over 30 years old, and it is the infrastructure, it, it's the HABC system, it's a lot of things that, and a lot of these, uh, we're having to replace the schools, but a lot of it is, um, taking care of those other things that were within the schools. A lot of it is bringing the schools up to where they should be before, as I told the County Commissioner not too long ago, they're going to collapse, because we, we have to keep them up, and we don't have enough money coming from abdominal taxes to do all this. We're going to have to have a bond issue. And so I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, approved the resolution to request a bond referendum in 2016 elections.
I'll second. I'll, I'll second, for the sake of discussion, I'd like to talk about a couple of things real quickly. The, uh, the current amount that we're anticipating, 173 million, that becomes formalized in this resolution, would that carry on? I mean, i- is there an opportunity at some point for adjustment to reflect, um, more precise estimates? Because I would point out that we say it right here, we, we did a facility study, we didn't do, um, any kind of detailed analysis of costs, so these are all still somewhat, um, probable cost, not necessarily accurately estimated cost. Uh, and just a little anecdote, um, the last referendum for the college involved about $30 million, and each of the projects that were completed by that $30 million were reduced in scope by 30% by the time they went to bid, because of market factors and the estimating. We couldn't, we couldn't, uh, stand having a 30% variation in the cost of an elementary school.
The last one that was passed, we ended up coming under budget on our, because I think we were more physically, we had a better watchdog on, on how we were spending the money and, um, and, and looking for the best bang in the bucks, and, and we, we're going to have to do that with this one also. But I understand what you're saying, because in actuality...
Well, dynamic world, uh, dynamic, um, right now, um, I, I, I think we all recognize that, um, you know, there hasn't been a great deal of inflation for the past five or six years, but it would be just our luck in two years to be hit with a wave of inflation where material costs go out of the roof. So I am concerned about tagging it with a specific number, but also think it's important for everyone to understand the general magnitude of what it is we think we must have.
I agree. So what is your suggestion?
Well, I, I don't really, uh, have a suggestion other than, um, that we set about quickly trying to confirm some of these high-party projects, and then I had in mind with the early college high school expansion and, uh, uh, facility there, that we, uh, maybe take the opportunity to program that and even do a, a little bit more, I'm, I'm sorry?
I was just...
Oh, okay.
Pointing that this is what she and I were going to have to become involved in.
Oh, okay, well, if we take this opportunity, uh, we might could couple it with an effort that Ms. Babson is working on, and that is the Steering Committee for STEM CTE. This could be a, a, a good place to start. If we could put together a, a more elaborate and detailed program, it would allow us to estimate and create a better scope for what might be a $30 million project.
Well, let me ask you, uh, everybody that, that would know, if we don't vote on this tonight, that doesn't mean that necessary slowing down in our, uh, processes of trying to decide which is the best place to put our money. I just want it to get out as soon as possible, because we're going to do it on, in 2016.
What you're saying is that we could probably revisit the actual amount?
Right.
That's what I was...
I would suggest, make a motion to approve the resolution.
Without an amendment?
With an amendment to come after we get the correct figure.
Because if you remember, the facility study actually showed about 250, 260.
Well, I mentioned the conditions of the liaison committee.
And that was in 2012.
And that was in 2012.
Or that it might be more than 173,000.
And just, just for general information purposes, uh, the conversation we were having last year, or actually two years ago, where we had pared it down, we were talking about a potential referendum of 130 million.
Yeah.
Well, that was, for clarification purposes, that was, uh, what we were talking about when we were considering the benefits of a, a sales tax referendum. We were going to fund $50 million worth of work with the sales tax referendum. Now that gets added into the bond referendum because it failed.
Okay.
Could we do that, Mr. Turner?
In other words, you're saying, uh, just a blanket resolution without a dollar figure in there?
Yeah.
To be determined. Could we do something?
Certainly. You can, you can do that.
Is there enough time, Ms. Rattler?
Are your CTE funds built into that resolution?
CTE?
The last, that's all they were. STEM, yeah.
The early college high school program, yeah.
No, that's a different fund.
Do we really know a good estimate of what that funding is going to require?
Not at this time. We're working on that. We formed a committee, we're discussing it, but no, not at this time.
So, we're, we're dealing with an unknown amount.
Just to be fair, Mr. Green, uh, for the, for everyone to, if we are talking about deferred maintenance items, those are relatively straightforward, we can anticipate those, but the problems that we would have is, we're talking about a type of building that, uh, is very unique, and we, we do not have a history of designing early college high school facilities. We're in a leased space at the college right now.
So it should be a blank amount, because we simply don't know.
And Mr. Cahill, I think, ask.
When this was, uh, discussed during committee, the intent, uh, among the Board members was to take out the amount. We did so at the very bottom, now, therefore be it resolved, we took out the amount because the idea of this resolution is to inform the Commissioners that the Board wishes to proceed with a bond referendum, but there is still much work to be done in refining that program. That would be the next step. This is to show that the Board is united in, uh, the need for, uh, to move forward with the bond. So if we can cross out the, uh, the 173, um, million, if you wish...
Spark out the 173.
We can do that.
Would you main, maintain, retain the before, the statement before that, the 2012 facility study?
Because that's just a...
Because that was, that was the, okay. That was kind of the earmark to, to start off.
And we really could leave the 173 in and the whereas, because that's kind of where we've evolved in the conversation about the various projects. To me, it's more about the bottom line of, therefore be it resolved, we're just asking for the referendum to, to, um, be presented to the Commissioners.
Do you need a, a motion to amend?
Just amend that.
Okay.
Will we amend or not take it?
Take the amount out, the dollar amount.
The amount out.
But I would think that we would have to have an amount very soon.
I'm sure we came home and gone, and on.
Well, as John said, the facilities part and, uh, the upgrades and all that is pretty sad. What, what we have to have the amounts for is the Career Tech, STEM, Career Tech High School and those type of things, and we can, we've done some work that we can come with that, with those numbers.
Well, I think what makes it difficult is if we have a...
Little school component in the early college high school project, then that's quite different from an early college high school, and we, we haven't talked about those things at this point. So, it, it is worth our while to spend a little bit of, um, time to try to narrow that program down, and that's, I think that's one of the things I'd like us to consider at our next Operations Committee.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that we've, uh, what we've identified is 250 million, and so, if, if you say that it's, that we're not closing the door on making this, uh, project higher or lower, either one.
How long do we think it'll take to get this amount? How long do we anticipate it taking to get the...
Uh, Mr. Tab, we can, we can start meeting on that this week.
Forty-six months.
July?
I'd say probably six. We don't need to wait very long.
It depends on how detailed the management estimate that you want.
When we talked with Ms. Hardy a few, um, months ago on one of these meetings, I believe she recommended...
Can I hear you out there? If I can, I wish you...
I believe that, um, she recommended hiring, or she indicated that last time we hired a consultant.
Right.
So the first step would be our Board deciding we want to move forward, get Commissioner approval, and then I think hiring a consultant would be the next, um, next move. approval, and then I think hiring a consultant would be the next, next move, to help move this along.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to amend to delete the amount of one hundred and seventy-three million from the resolution.
Second.
Second.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor of approval with the amendment?
First.
Yeah, then do my motion.
All right, all approval of the amendment?
Aye.
Any favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, now, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Have you taken it? He's second, Mr. ... I made a motion, and he's second.
Yeah.
We're clear on that.
So, aye.
All right, so now we'll move on to the funding agreement.
So, do you want to talk about this one?
Let's have discussion.
Would it be appropriate for Mr. Tubbs to sort of summarize presentations to the commissioners, or...
Yeah, I think so. You would like that before we make a motion, or? I think so.
In summary, in about two sentences, the commissioners are expressed their issues with, with funding to have the lower tax primarily because of the fact that the county did not grow this past year, and that the value of the property throughout the county as a gross amount dropped, that they were having to cut some of their programs, and at that point, were not looking and did not want to increase our funding agreement from the thirty-six point five percent up to the one or two percentage points that we were asking for. So, we were basically at the same funding level that we've been at for the last ten years.
I believe this.
Two thousand ten. Two thousand ten, I'm sorry.
Five years.
Five years. And in our liaison meeting, it was very amenable, it was, you know, nobody was upset at each other, we just laid the cards on the table and talked.
Just, just a question, did they say that there would be any more of an increase with the tax collection? Was that brought up or asked? Would there be any more monies that would be funded?
At that meeting, but they have, Anne has indicated that there's possibility, and Fred can probably speak to that better.
Right.
Actually, with the existing agreement, the budget that they set would provide that four hundred and forty thousand additional funding. That's closer estimate than other.
And that's for unanticipated collections, is that...
Right. Yes.
But that still would leave us about four to five million dollars below what we need to continue what we're doing right now.
Mr. Tubbs, just a quick question for you. The commissioners are trying to maintain revenue-neutral tax rate.
That's correct.
And that basically means that they're going to adjust the tax rate to, and I couldn't quite figure this out, it's not to last year's spending levels, but there's a different formula, and I'm curious about that.
I took it to mean that the, the tax rate would go up so that the collections would amount to basically the same amount of collections from last year, and then they would spend that money, allocate that money to their departments, and then allocate our portion based on the thirty-six point five percent, and that they did not anticipate an increase in their collections because of the, the fact they want to keep it tax-neutral and collection-neutral. It's almost, as Anne Hardy said, a zero budget, where you're working at one level, and then that's, that's the level you want to meet this year.
In the discussions that board members have had with the liaison committee, did they indicate why it was so important to remain revenue-neutral in any way? Because they, they talked about having to reduce benefits for their employees and things like that, but we've been doing that for five years.
Well, we made that quite clear this, this week. This week is, I want to be going too fast, I think, the last time we met with them. I think we made it quite clear that we had not had an increase in five years, but the problem is, when the collections are lower, we have a decrease. We have an increase in students coming into the county, but we have a decrease in funds because we get a percentage of what the FLOR taxes are, not according to students, but according to what the revenue is. And I am very concerned about that. I, I've tried, and I do try, I understand what their position is. They're getting cuts from the state in many programs, the same way we are. But here we are, getting a decrease, you may as well say, in the amount of funding, and then cuts from the state, and after a while, well, it's past time. It really is affecting our educational system.
Well, I would point out that the commissioners are basically doing what they are supposed to be doing, they are shepherding tax dollars and looking at the interest of taxpayers in the community, and they've done a fine job of that. Historically, the funding agreement has worked out quite well, because we had annual growth in the tax base. But I think as top educators in the county, you know, the Board of Education, we, we have to communicate to them that we have taken about as much out of it as we can, out of our budgets as we can, without beginning to impact the classroom, and I believe we've already passed that point, frankly. We were at Virginia Williamson this morning, and we desperately should have more TAs in the early classes. They're sharing a single TA between three grades, and that's, that's amazing. In their case, I don't know how it's affecting the scores and the outcomes, but the children could, would greatly benefit from having a TA full-time. But we have those kinds of things where we're impacting education, and as chief educators in the community, I think we have to communicate to the commissioners that we need additional funding, period. We don't have to say it in a mean way, or to snipe, or anything like that, we, we simply need to tell them what our needs are, and mean it, and say it sincerely, and trust them to try to do their best to, to help meet those needs.
I might be missing something, Mr. Thompson, but hadn't we done that three times?
Well...
I'm not sure that I'm not missing something.
You are, you are probably missing something. It's, I don't believe that I can support the funding agreement, because it is an acknowledgement that we would be accepting inadequate funding for our children and staff, and I just don't want to acknowledge that. I want to go on record as a board saying, we need the extra money.
I've just debated this thing back and forth in my mind, back in, my passion, my heart is for the children of this county.
Well, there hadn't been a motion made on the resolution, but I want to make a statement then. I'm elected to be an advocate for Brunswick County Schools, and we are public education, we're not a county department, and it saddens me that the county has put more emphasis on buying land and funds in education, so I'm against this funding agreement, too.
Well, suppose I understand to have answers to them by May the fifteenth?
We have to provide a budget request, and some change.
Yeah, and that was really the reason for putting it on the agenda tonight. They have said many times, if there are other needs we have, we can come back to them and ask for more money. We would rather know how much money we're going to have, so we can plan, but I, I'm gonna vote for it, because I think we have to move on, but I just, and I don't know what would happen if we vote against it. I mean, you know, I don't know that that's gonna make any difference.
Well, actually... Ms. Cahill may need to explain, but what she just said is very important. We, we have to give them a statement of our budget requirements or needs. The funding agreement notwithstanding, we can simply tell them that we need this year thirty-five million dollars, and that will cover us, or whatever the number actually is, but I think we should communicate to the commissioners what we need, and let them, as the leaders of the community that have the authority to raise taxes and to allocate funds, let them figure out how to fund the educational needs, but we have to tell them what we need.
Well, I think we've done that explicitly.
I have to repeat myself, I'm not sure...
Several times.
How do you, how do you...
We, we have not, as a board, acted to tell them what we need. We have communicated it individually through the liaison committee, but board action is a powerful statement of support for funding for Brunswick County Schools.
That maybe a statement would be not, not approved a funding agreement. Maybe a statement would be not a funding approval, not approving the funding agreement.
Well, we can't leave Ms. Cahill without a budget, so we need a number if we chose to go that way.
There's been many years that we've drugged a budget on through September, so that's not gonna be an uncommon thing because of Raleigh, because of the state. Isn't that right, Ms. Cahill? We, we had approved a budget.
We would get one twelfth.
This is local funds, and we do have to submit a budget request of some kind by May fifteenth.
Well, I think the information is, and I really, I understand both of what you're saying. We've had such a great working relationship with them, and I would like to see that continue, because not at the expense of us continuing this way either. So, I'm just in a quandary, but I think at this time, I'm gonna go ahead and vote for it, so we can at least start from there.
The only problem with that, Ms. Babson, is that we are, we are not saying we can't have an agreement with the county. We're just saying that their almost arbitrary decision to limit revenue, the status of taxes to revenue-neutral ignores the needs of the school system, and I don't think we, as the top educators in the community, can afford to let them make that assumption without hearing from us. We have to tell them publicly and as a board that the funding is essential for Brunswick County Schools.
I believe in the funding agreement, and I believe that's what we need to do, and I believe we have made our voice heard to them numerous times, and we have budget meetings, we have finance meetings, they are very well aware of what we need, just as they're well aware of what this entire county needs. So, I believe as a board, we need to make a statement, but if you want to make a personal statement, that's fine. I believe we have voiced our needs to them time and time and time again, and I don't believe that they have been negligent in trying to provide us what we need. They know what our needs are, they know what the needs of the county are, and they're doing what they can do at this time in the economy, and we have always had extra. Somehow, I believe there has been different tax incentives and things that have come along, that we have had extra, and we're, we are in a crisis, everybody's in a crisis right now financially, but I believe this is the way to go, because there are plenty of boards across this state that spend every day arguing with their county commissioners over how to get funding, and this has worked for us in the past. I mean, we've, I just, I believe this is the way to go, and that's, and I will support this.
Well, you know that that's in direct opposition to what Superintendent has recommended, right? I mean, he's told us what he needs to run the school system, and with three and a half million dollars short.
Was he just kidding?
He didn't tell us that. He, our finance officer over there put these, all these figures together.
Is that a word? Less, I asked him the other day specifically, is this money you need?
I said, no, sir.
That's correct.
So, our educators are telling us they need the money, and I understand the county commissioners, the pinch they're in, but, you know, we've been very good partners and gracious partners for the past five or six years, and at some point, we have to stand up and say, additional funding is necessary. If we don't believe it, you vote for that budget agreement, but I believe, Mr. Tubbs, when he tells us we need additional money.
Well, John, we're not saying that the superintendent is...
That is exactly what this is about.
Well, that's the way you say it.
No, no, that's, that's all it is, is three and a half million dollars.
I know it's three and a half, well, I'm not getting in that kind of marks.
But we do have it above the line and below the line, also.
Because, I mean, you've told them this many, many times now, they know that.
They know that.
If we don't vote for this, I mean, what, what would happen? I mean, would they, would we not get any local money? I mean, is that a...
No, you have to, we have to have a budget recommendation.
By fifteen?
Right.
Yes.
They know the dilemma we're in.
If a funding agreement were not signed or approved, then the other option would be to submit a budget request, which would include the, the request that the board has reviewed, so put that on top of, the three and a half million on top of what we got last year. But one consideration is those revenues that fall into our capital outlay reserve funds that come from excess collections in future years. You know, there's some, some side benefits to the funding agreement, that the one year we didn't have an agreement, we lost, I think, a million and a half dollars in revenues for future years.
It's taking a chance if you don't have some kind of agreement with them.
Well, I think that maybe... You're overstating it a little bit, because you're talking about three and a half million dollars additional request, and what's at risk is another, maybe five hundred thousand or a million. That would be extraordinary, wouldn't it?
Would you explain that to me?
We've asked for what we believe we need as a school system. If it's thirty-eight million, that's what we should tell them, or that's what I believe we should tell them. We may not get thirty-eight million, but I would like to set the mark at where we need it, and let them struggle with how they can figure out how to support and help fund the schools. Right now, we're taking the argument off the table, and I just feel like we have to advocate for children at this point, and that's why I, I, I support a general notion of an agreement with the county for funding, but in this case, it's, I think it's much more important for us to be together on this and say, we need additional considerations, we, we really have to...
Okay. I guess hang together.
When was the last liaison? You just had one.
Monday.
Monday?
Monday, this one.
Yesterday?
Yesterday, yeah, it was yesterday.
And I forgot.
You were there, Ms., it was yesterday, wasn't it?
I was there, but I'm getting today's...
We checked the newspaper.
It was yesterday. It was yesterday.
Just two commissioners. There?
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Hardy there?
Yes. Now, we did, we, there's another side to this. We discussed the fact of some issues in the legislature, some laws that they're talking about passing, bills are talking about passing, that's going to affect our funding and their funding. So, we, we talked about joining together when we go up to Raleigh tomorrow, to try to keep us from losing more money in the General Assembly, and ten people representing all the people that voted for them in this, in this county, I think it's a lot more powerful than five people. And I just think there's a way we're gonna work toward this thing, but I don't, right at this time, I just can't see, this agreement actually came out of a lawsuit years ago, and I just can't see giving away their agreement. And I just can't see giving away the agreement. I, that, I can't do, I just don't see that.
Do you, do you imagine that it's permanent?
It doesn't have to be permanent, no.
Well, I don't, I don't understand...
How do you change it?
What, what you're telling me is that you are willing to, to, to not request the three and a half million dollars we need as a school system to move forward, simply to make sure that the commissioners can remain revenue-neutral in the tax rate.
You are putting words in my mouth, and I do not appreciate it.
That is what you're, you're saying.
Well, I don't, don't think for me, okay?
I'm telling you, that's what you're saying.
No, that is not what I'm saying. You decide what you want to say. Let me decide what I want to say. Don't interpret what I say.
Well, there's no need for us to argue publicly over this, Ms. Babson, but the point is...
No, but you're doing it.
If you sign that agreement as a board, you are agreeing with the commissioner's philosophy of, of neutral, a revenue-neutral budget, because we have signed on to it.
Why are you talking just to me, John? This is a board that's deciding. Let's decide as a board, okay?
Excuse me, Ms. Babson.
Madam Chairman, is there a motion on the floor?
There is not.
There's not been a motion.
There's not been a motion.
Why don't we go ahead and somebody make a motion, and we can either...
Make a motion to approve the agreement.
That would be the best thing to do.
Any discussion, any more further discussion? We've had the discussion before the... All right. All in favor of the amendment?
Of the agreement.
Of the agreement, I'm sorry, I'm, agreement. All opposed?
No.
All right. Amendment passed? That was the last thing on the...
Pact.
Agendas and the, any discussions?
The pact.
Any discussions by the counter?
The pact meeting from May the...
Madam Chairman, I make a motion. We changed the pact meeting to May eighteenth from May twelve.
All right.
And it opens, keeps the calendar straight, and we can go to all the...
It's on discussion, under discussion.
Well, he added it under three.
We added it, okay. I'm sorry.
Change it from...
The twelfth to the eighteenth.
We will see that that gets published on email. We will put it on our website, and we will make the press conference.
Have we been to every area this year except this one, or do we still have another one?
We have not gone to, we opted out of going to Jesse Maiden Row and held it at the Co-op.
Yeah, okay. The pact, you know what I'm getting ahead of my mind, the visits to schools.
At school visits.
That's what I'm having confused.
Yeah, those will be the last.
That's what I really wanted to ask, was have we been to every area except this, this year for visits to schools as a board?
Can I meet you here to go to Wilmington for dinner? Sure.
I think I got ahead of, ahead of my schedule.
Just meet you here about one time.
Let me find out what it is and ask protection.
A motion to change the pact. All in favor of changing the pact to the eighteenth?
Aye.
Okay.
Anybody opposed? All right.
I'm gonna try to talk. Discussion.
All right, any more?
John, I think I...
That's a fund. Committee meetings are on the nineteenth, huh?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Early college graduation in twenty-seven.
Yeah, we, we, I've been a couple of times.
Where, where is the graduation for early college to be held?
It's at Otter Williamson.
Otter.
In the regular...
At the room?
In the, in the, in the other wings, mhm, in the regular auditorium.
One other one is that Brunswick Community College has their graduation...
This Friday.
This Friday, and we have two, three or four kids graduating.
Friday.
Friday at two.
Where is that?
Ole Miss.
Okay, guys, BCC.
BCC, yeah.
What time?
We're gathering at two fifteen. I think it's at three o'clock. Talking to me?
Yeah, I'm just talking.
We're not allowed to do that.
Do we have a motion for closed session?
Some who, please.
Second.
Excellent.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. Have a good night.